Test? Yeah. Thank you all for being here this evening for the city council meeting. It's an honor for us to be here. Our first part of business this evening will be a proclamation that I'll read. Then we'll have an opportunity for, after the proclamation, we'll have an invocation and the pledge of allegiance, which we'll have, we'll start with the pledge of allegiance, I'm sorry. And then we'll have the invocation, which tonight will be done by Pastor Flannoy. And Pastor Flannoy can come forward and use the same microphone as well. And then we'll have our proclamation. So if you all join me by standing for the pledge of allegiance. And our flag is over on this side. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Heavenly Father, we come with humble hearts and lifted spirits thanking you so much for your blessings you've bestowed upon us this day. Thanking you for the city council meeting, asking that you fall fresh on us tonight with instructions and directions. We'll forever give you the honor and the glory. We thank you for your son, Jesus Christ, and his salvation. And when this meeting is over, be in the mechanics of our vehicle and let us get home safely. Lord, and teach us to love one another if you have loved us. We ask all of this in your son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Thank you, Pastor. The proclamation this evening reads, "Whereas in every generation, members of our armed forces have answered the call in our nation's hour of need, they have defended our freedom and way of life. And whereas we Americans are blessed with the freedom made possible by the service and sacrifice of so many, it is fitting and just that our entire nation's honor and pays special tribute to our prisoners of war and those who remain missing. And whereas the National POW MIA Remembrance Day is September 17th, and whereas many from Bonner Springs and Wyandotte County shared this sacrifice, we honor these Americans who have been prisoners of war. We remember those who are still missing in action and renew our commitment to keep searching until all are accounted for. And therefore, I, Jeff Harrington, Mayor of the City of Bonner Springs, do hereby additionally proclaim September 27, 2021, as POW MIA Recognition Day in Bonner Springs, Kansas, and urge all citizens to join me in saluting all American prisoners of war and those missing in action, and to observe this day with appropriate ceremonies and activities in witness whereof. I have hereunto set my hand and the seal of the City of Bonner Springs, Kansas." Thank you for your service.
Thank you. And if you'll permit, just so you know, a little bit about the reality of what we're looking for here. There are still approximately 77,000 from World War II that have not been accounted for. From Korea, there are 99 from Kansas. And it was 100 last year, so one had been returned in the last year. From those 99 in, from Korea that are still missing, 12 are from Wyandotte County, five from Johnson County, and two from Leavenworth County. So I mean, that hits home. And then the Vietnam War, and Kansas, there's a total of 24 still unaccounted for from Kansas. There's 1,584 altogether from the US that are unaccounted for. Four of those are from Wyandotte County and three from Johnson County. And then in the Cold War era, which is the 1950s to the 1960s and 70s, there's five individuals from Kansas still unaccounted for. Now, here's the plus side. I just checked my emails, because I get an email once a month, once a week from National BFW. And there's the remains from individual that was unaccounted for in France, being returned home from World War II. There are three individuals being returned home from Korea that was in 1950. Those of you who knew Pete Gomez, he was probably part of that where those individuals got lost. And he was one of the few's that came through it. And then there are two individuals from the USS Oklahoma whose remains have been identified as well. So, you know, that's the plus side, and that's what we're looking for, because this is to bring closure to those families who have never seen their loved ones to come home. You know, it's a big deal. You know, as Mike can share and Pastor can share, you know, it means a lot to the families to have closure. So that's why we have this and do this recognition. And so it's very important.
Thank you. Let's get a picture here, everybody. If you all scoot in, please scoot in for the picture. Scoot in. Here we go. Very good. Yes, I did. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all very much. We'll be moving along to items that are not on tonight's agenda that like, citizens that like, would like to address the city council. Is there anyone here that would like to address the city council about items not on tonight? Please come forward to the podium and state your name and address. You may want to push that button on the bottom of the microphone and point the microphone to you. There you go. Okay, it's green. Yep, that helps.
Hey, my name's Kevin Zemrle. I live on Stillwell Road. About a month ago approximately, I put in the paperwork to get some streets closed, Oak Street, to be exact. We were gonna have a, hoping to have like a block party. We were gonna promote it as, you know, come out and meet your neighbor. Come out and talk to your neighbor. We're gonna have some fun games, just, you know, all family games and everything. And I didn't get quite in like I was supposed to, because somebody else was supposed to do it, which is beside the point. About a month ago, I put the paperwork in, and there was some misunderstanding if I was gonna do it or not, because I said, "I'm not sure I have enough time." So I went back to my store, got cash, because you wouldn't accept my credit card. I paid for it. And then I brought a map up the next day like I was asked to do. Well, through miscommunications, it never got on the last city council member's agenda to approve this. So I put everything together that was requested me of that night. I pushed it through the door upstairs. And the next day, I got, actually, my wife got an email and she forwarded it to me. And it says, "You know, thank you, we got all the stuff you needed." And then it says, according to, let's see. See, I need a list of the vendors, which when I originally put the paperwork in, I said, "I don't know the vendors yet, because we want to get approval first and then try to get people to come in to do stuff." So that was an unknown, and I was told, "That's okay." But it says, "I need a list of all the vendors, a list of all the planned activities, which we're still working on, which I don't really see how that kind of affects what I'm gonna be doing." And then it says, "A statement detailing how you are notifying the affected property owners and tenants of this." This is where I have the problem at. Just a few weeks ago, we had Tiblo Days. I don't, I know the Chamber of Commerce has a lot. Nobody came and told me about it. Earlier this year, there was a Makers Fair. Nobody came and asked me about it. There was a Junker's Jamboree. Nobody came and asked me about it. Last two years ago, there was a Tiblo Days. Nobody asked me about it. Now all of a sudden, do I have to do this? You guys even follow your own rules.
I know some of those that have come into the funeral home and made mention of things that were going to happen. I don't know what the requirements are. Can you speak to that? The requirements for closing the street require that the group notify?
Yes, yes, as part of our application process is that they let us know how they're notifying the shops. If events are happening and you're not being notified, please let me know. Because each application that we receive comes with information that they have notified the shops and the residents that will be affected.
I asked one business that has closed the streets multiple times. I said, "Have you ever done this?" Never have I been asked to notify anybody. They said they have never, ever done it. I said, "What about the vendors?" No. They said, "We provide one after it's over." But it's, they said, "We've never been asked to provide one beforehand." They said, "They have never, ever been asked to notify, and they never have notified any of the businesses." So we feel, and I'm probably going overboard. We feel like we're being picked on, to be honest with you. You know, you're asking us to do stuff that I've been told other people don't do.
It's a part of the application. It's a part of the application, that's where you saw it.
Yes.
And they have to fill out the same application. So I don't know how they feel they haven't ever done that.
They said they have never, since they've been doing this, I will, I could tell you, I'm not gonna name the person over here. They said they have never, ever notified any businesses, and they've been doing it for multiple years, and two and three times a year.
I know some of the times we're not notified. At least they, they have to notify the city with their plan to notify people. I don't know if that includes actually notifying people.
It is supposed to include notifying people, but we don't monitor that. We take them at their word when they give us the information, say, "This is the sign I'm putting on the doors, and this is how I'm telling people." We take them at their word for it.
Does the city do it when they have Tiblo Days?
I know some people have been notified.
Tiblo Days also isn't the city's event. It's the Chamber of Commerce puts that on. So we ask the Chamber, as part of that, to go out and notify the businesses. And I think Tiblo Days is generally held the same day of the year.
And the Chamber of Commerce fills out that same application and sends us the same information that they're notifying people?
I know, I know we've been notified. Yes.
Can this be looked at, you know, it either needs to be done or it doesn't, one of the two. You know, I'm asking to be doing it, and other people I've talked to, they said they've never done it. You know, if it's gonna be just an honor system, just take it off. Why even have it?
Do you think it's important?
To notify them? Once it's approved, yes. You know, if the city council approves it, then, yeah, I'll go to the people and say, "Hey, this is what we're doing." But the people that's affected already knew about this, because we've already, we sent out a, kind of a, we sent an email saying, "If this is approved by the city council, this is what we want to do." So they said, "This is all pending city council approval. If it does, then we'll all get together real quick and we'll put something together." And so all the businesses knew about it, that we were trying to do this. But did I actually notify every business? No, I did not, because I don't have the email to the attorneys or the restaurants and stuff like that. So, but most of them didn't know about it, yes. Because we're trying to get everybody involved.
So what you're saying is you think it should be required for, to use the city streets to notify each individual business as a part of being allowed to use the city street?
If it's during business hours, yes. Ours is gonna be after business hours. Businesses are all be closed. So it didn't affect.
After the hours for this, the restaurants you made mention and the bars?
It was not gonna go down that far. It was gonna stop at, was on Second Street, up the hill. And everybody up there closes like around three or four, and that's when it was gonna start. So technically, everybody's closed anyway.
So you don't think it should have to notify the businesses?
We can notify them, but I have to, I shouldn't have to have their permission or anything, because they're all closed. What, it won't affect them.
Well, it's not, you're not asking permission. It, that permission is not what's requested. It's the notification. There's no permission.
Okay, that's, yes.
None of this, none of the, the Tiblo Days doesn't ask for permission. It, it's the notification.
I have no problem with notification, but nobody's done to us, though. That's what I'm saying. It's not standard. So if they're not gonna do it, it should be taken off of the form, because it's not being done. I have never been notified, because I've been there.
And I want you to know, I have been notified.
But we have never been. So, so obviously, it's not uniform. And the streets are closed up at our business.
And that, that does have an impact. It impacts all of the businesses, whether they happen to be open or not. I know, I know other businesses on the street are impacted, whether they're able to get to it or not. For example, the lawyers, they may not have office hours, but they're not able to get to their business at that time. And that's been some of the concern with Tiblo Days. So it's not asking permission of the individual property owners. It's notifying the businesses and.
That's fine. I'm just, I'm just asking for everybody to play by the same rules.
And requiring that. So I guess we'll just have to require that they bring in with their application that they have notified all the property owners.
Yeah. I mean, that's, all I'm asking, everybody, everybody's the same.
Right.
You know, because it's, obviously, it's not being done. You know, so.
Not completely.
Yes, so, you know, notifying, I have no problem. I think that's a great idea, letting them know that, you know, on a certain date, two or three months out, we're actually, we're gonna plan this for the spring now. And we have all kinds of great stuff planned. We're gonna do like, you know, like your cornhole. And then we have what we call geezer golf. We throw the golf balls on the string. I got one six and a half foot tall and that wide. We've made dice to play a barkle or something like that. And I made dice this big, you know, that people could throw around and have fun with. I've made dominos. Mine are this big and that tall each. You know, it's just, we want to do something. And get people to come out and visit their neighbors.
And the springtime's a great time. We used to have Marble Days in the spring. That was a family fun event. And there was a lot of, a lot of interest in that.
We're actually gonna try to get ahold of the gentleman that owns that business and see if he'd like to join us somehow and do something with us also on that. That's our plans, but we'll try again for the spring. I just want, I just want to bring it to y'all's attention that it's not being uniform, is all.
And, and we may have to redo the application process and put in that requirement or a sheet or an inventory of those that have been notified to help with that.
That's all I ask.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Everyone, good evening.
Anyone else that'd like to stand and address the city council about items not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move ahead to the consent agenda. The consent agenda this evening, which includes the minutes from the September 13th city council meeting, claims for city operation and the public use request for the Makers Fair. Hopefully, they will have recognized the need for notifying everyone. I, I know we saw that that was happening. We put that on our calendar on Oak Street. Is there anything to be pulled by the city? Anything by the citizens? Questions or concerns from the commission? Counsel. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
So moved by Mr. Thompson and seconded by Mr. Shannon. Vote, please.
Reeves?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. And, and if you could ask those people that are in charge of the Makers Fair to make sure they notify each, not only that they had a plan, but that they do actually notify all the properties affected owners.
They noted on their application that they had hand-delivered letters to all the businesses on Oak Street. So I will verify that that happened. Did one make it to your store?
And I don't, I know we knew about it, but I would have to check who got the letter. Very good, thank you. Onto new business, the first item of which is the water treatment plant Phase One design-build agreement. Staff?
Good evening, everyone. This is a proposal, as we discussed in the work session, that kind of takes the next step in an effort to get a fresh perspective and a new evaluation of all the options and possible solutions related to making sure that that water treatment plant, if it ever evolves, and we're optimistic that it will, but make sure it's both functional and feasible. This is a Phase One design-build agreement with Burns and McDonnell and CAS Constructors LLC in the amount of $348,860. It's in compliance with all KDHE funding requirements. It's also had a successful legal review as well. So this, again, is a Phase One design-build agreement, meaning at the end of the Phase One, they will deliver a guaranteed not-to-exceed price for two of the components, and actually, maybe a third with the well components as well. And we will have the decision to make either yes or no on all of those at that time. I would be glad to answer any questions you may have related to this.
Very good.
Yeah, do you have any idea when this phase will be completed?
We have 180 days, so that's six months. So you're probably talking the end of March or sooner, but.
Very good. Is there anything else by other city staff? Citizens? I entertain a motion that we can discuss on the floor.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve Phase One design-build agreement with Burns and McDonnell CAS Contractors LLC for new water treatment plant facility in the amount of $348,860.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Reeves and seconded by Mr. Mackey. Questions, concerns, comments? And we'll start down here with Mr. Shannon. Sir?
Frank, on their contract, the terms and conditions for professional service, specific contract, paragraph two, payments to the design builder. I bring this up specifically because with, when we did the police station and now the city hall, we still have stuff that isn't finished, and we are working on doing punch lists, and the buildings, we're literally in it, and we're occupied. Reason I'm talking about this is the, paragraph two is payments to the design builder, and there is.
What page are you on, actually?
My apologies. Does not have a page number.
Should be lower left.
I guess it's technically five, or page five of 13 of the PDF. This is for the preliminary design-build agreement.
What I'm looking at only has four pages on the agreement.
Yeah, this was the addendum of the.
Terms and conditions for professional.
Oh, oh, okay. The next page. Okay. I'm there now.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
What, what actually was the question?
On here, I believe, one, two, three, four, five lines down, "A late payment charge will be added to all amounts not paid within 30 days of statement date and shall be calculated at 1.5% per month from statement date. Client shall reimburse any costs incurred by design-build, blah, blah, blah." I'm, I'm excited that they have representation on that, but I read the entire document and didn't see anything for the client's side of either liquidated damages or in the event that, I was kind of curious about the payment as well. If we have any disputes, there was a paragraph in here about being able to dispute, what was it? Disbursements of funds. But I'm curious, on the 30 days and the 1.5, if we do have disputes, I want to make sure that we're not being charged during the dispute period.
Well, in the, kind of the last few sentences of that same paragraph says, "If a portion of the joint venture statement is disputed, client shall pay the undisputed portion by the due date, and client shall advise the design builder in writing of the basis for any disputed portion of the statement." So essentially, we go into.
That means that we would not be charged during the dispute period?
That's right, until a dispute is settled.
Okay. And in the event that we had any late moments or things that were broken or punch lists, how, what is our representation for that? Do we get paid back anything?
This particular agreement doesn't really produce anything that you would build. This is all development of plans and things like that, and development of costs. So it's a little bit different in that particular perspective. But this is a standard agreement for terms and, terms and conditions, but we're not actually building a widget or anything.
Okay, so this isn't for the design-build. This is for the.
This is for the design part of the design build.
Preliminary design and pre-construction services.
Yeah.
Okay. I appreciate it then.
But we're not actually building anything you can touch, except a set of plans, maybe.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that, because I saw the, the design builder lingo in there. I wanted to make sure that it was just for the design plans specifically. Thank you. That addresses it, I appreciate it.
Sir?
Nothing further.
No other questions, concerns, comments from the council? Vote, please.
Voting on a motion to approve the Phase One design-build agreement with Burns and McDonnell CAS Contractors LLC for new water treatment plant facilities in the amount of $348,360. Shannon?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you all. Thank you, sir. Onto item number two, the KDOT grant agreement, traffic signal modernization. I guess that's the same staff personnel.
Well, there we go. Got it. Okay, this, this actually is for approval of something that we had discussed and verbally approved earlier, to see that we could go ahead and proceed with it. KDOT is now catching up with the paperwork to get it to where we actually have to sign and execute an agreement. But this has to do with the traffic signal lighting systems and the improvements. Funding was approved May 26th, earlier this year. It's a grant, so this is not money that we need to pay back, but we do need to participate in the way of funding engineering costs and design stuff and getting it all approved, which we already have underway. So the total estimated cost of construction component of the project at this particular time is $283,250. The grant portion of the project will fund 90% of that at $254,925. The remaining $28,325 is the city's. The remaining twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and twenty-five is the city's match to this in addition to the monies we've spent on engineering to meet the design and all of that criteria. Uh, we do have this included in the twenty-twenty-two budget. And that's about all I have to say about it, I guess, seeking your approval.
Very good. Anything else from other staff? Citizens? Questions, concerns? Seeing na- none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the grant agreement with the Kansas Department of Transportation for signal, for traffic signal modernization in the amount of two hundred and fifty-four thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement.
Okay. So moved by Mr. Mackey and seconded by Mrs. Gurley. And questions, concerns, comments? We'll start down here with Mr. Reeves.
No questions here.
The details in it were so incredibly specific, but yeah, no question.
Is there a timeline under which you expect this to happen?
Frank, Mike, please, sir.
The goal at this time is to have all of the design criteria requirements met somewhere in the next couple of months so that we can actually be advertising with the blessing of KDOT, uh, so that we can award this in January of twenty-twenty-two because that's when.
Closures while they're physically doing things.
I don't know if we'll need to do that or not because signal heads will need to be adjusted and or replaced, perhaps.
For an extended period of time.
Pardon me?
Not actively closing roads for any extended period of time.
Oh, it shouldn't be, should be very brief. Yeah.
It seems as though, um, this is a small amount compared to what a traffic signal costs. So the amount of, uh, hard, uh, equipment, um, doesn't seem to be that it's, it's, uh, very great.
I thought that as well. So the original consultant, I asked them to confirm in writing that this was still an accurate number. And, uh, they confirmed back and said, yeah, that's what the numbers are. But the proof will be in the bidding, I guess.
Yeah, because I know, uh, Compton-Nettleton, that, uh, that, uh, light is woefully, woefully past its, its age of.
Most of this is electronics and stuff, but.
Right, exactly.
Even that's hard to get these days. So, you know, things have changed in the supply chain in the last six or eight months, at least.
But it was, hopefully, that all of this will be modernized and upgraded to a level that we all expect.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. No other questions, concerns, comments? Vote, please.
Voting on a motion to approve the grant agreement with the Kansas Department of Transportation for traffic signal modernization in the amount of two hundred and fifty-four thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement. Gurley?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, that's ended our new business. Onto our reports, the first of which, Mr. Peterson's city manager report.
Um, just a quick note to the council that there will be an induction ceremony at the, uh, National Agricultural Center and Hall of Fame that, uh, council is invited to. It's on October twenty-third. If you are wanting to attend that, please get with Chris as quickly as you can tonight, I guess.
Do a time?
Time is at eleven AM starts. And I should say this is, uh, induction, um, three individuals, um, including former Senator Pat Roberts, um, there. So again, yeah, that's eleven AM Saturday, October twenty-third. So there's that. Also want to follow up on our robust conversation with KDOT. Um, with our last council meeting, did have an opportunity to meet with them about K seven. Uh, in particular, uh, I have since following the direction from KDOT, reached out to them and officially asked that they revise or review the K seven plan specifically between the northern and southern border of Bonner Springs. Um, I believe there's pretty, uh, resounding agreement across the board that that is something that needs to be reevaluated, um, as far as the original, um, mid-two-thousand plan. So I don't have any other update than that, but the request officially has been made. Um, it sounds like that is a request that's also being made in Olathe as well as Spring Hill. Um, so this is not, uh, we're not alone, uh, as far as that's concerned. Uh, I did also bring up, um, some of the, um, maintenance considerations out in the right of way to include the four-foot bushes. So hopefully, we can get those addressed as well, so. And then lastly, um, we've been somewhat immune for a while for, from vandalism. Unfortunately, that seems to be back again, so, uh, I am just letting everybody know. Today, we did have Lions Park restroom, both, um, oh, both sinks, they're hung sinks, were, um, torn off of, um, the walls. One was earlier today and then the other one was in the last, you know, hour or so. So if there's anybody that knows, uh, anything about that, uh, please reach out to the police department. Uh, unfortunately, until, uh, we can get that addressed, obviously, that bathroom will be closed, uh, which is unfortunate, given, um, baseball season and everything else just starting out. So, uh, again, be on the lookout for, uh, suspicious things like that and please reach out to the police department, uh, if you see anything concerning. That is all I have this evening.
Thank you very much. And we'll start with, uh, city council items. We'll start right here, ma'am.
I simply am impressed at the amount of detail that goes into these plans for the, like, the lights and everything. And I, I know there's a lot of work involved in I thank those who are involved with it. That's all I have to say.
Nothing further for me?
Yeah, a couple of items I've been asked to, uh, reiterate. I, I know I brought these up before, but because other people have said so, I said, well, I'll mention it again. That's, uh, Metropolitan from Nettleton to Lakewood on the, really on both sides. So mowing and trimming needs to be done. There's, uh, limbs still hanging over the road. Uh, also, uh, on Metropolitan north on one hundred and thirty-fourth Street to the Aquatic Center on that curve there, there's stuff hanging out over the road. And also on the curve on Lakewood from Silver Hill on north, uh, let's see, no, excuse me, from Tiblo Lane, Tiblo Lane on north on both sides. There's stuff that, mowing that needs to be taken care of there and some branch trimming, especially on the east side, to open up visibility on that curve. And so there it is. I thank you very much.
Very good, sir. Sir?
I wanted to mention a joking moment of silence for the fire truck. It was moved. My second thing, I wanted to thank, uh, US Senator Roger Marshall for coming out to Bonner Springs and speaking. Uh, he did a town hall here. It was, uh, one of two. We were chosen Bonner Springs as well as Olathe. Uh, the, one of the ladies drove forty minutes, um, just to be able to come to Bonner Springs to hear him speak. As well as I wanted to thank, uh, Chuck Stites and Mike Kane, both held events in Bonner Springs as well. Chuck Stites had one at one of our event centers and Mike Kane did one at the, uh, park. Actually, I believe it might have been across the street from the Ag Hall. My third. Uh, I wanted to bring up something that I've noticed a whole bunch, um, pocket listings. We've got a handful of realtors in Bonner Springs, um, some of them good, some of them not so good. Uh, but our valuations in Bonner are literally going through the roof and not in a negative way. It's a good thing, but because it's the recognition of the quality of our community and the things that we're doing here to bring people in. But with that, uh, if you're wanting to list or want to sell your home, feel free to give me a call. I'm not a licensed attorney or a realtor. I won't charge anything, but I'm happy to help because we've had several, uh, not hedge funds, but there's a couple investors that have been calling people. I know that a neighbor across the street from me, uh, had somebody call him and informed them of how much their house was not worth and, uh, bought it for about fifty thousand dollars under market value and then tried to list it and wholesale it the next week. Uh, I would love to try and stop that and remind the realtors that pocket listings are illegal in the state of Kansas. A pocket listing is anything where you're selling a home, uh, without listing it first. If you're a licensed agent, I'd like to remind people that you can lose your license for that. And if anybody is aware of it, please turn it in, uh, because Bonner's doing well and we don't need our citizens ripped off. If you are aware of that, feel free to give me a call or an email and, uh, we have several individuals, um, that are experts in that area that we can turn it into. I also wanted to close out and wish my son's mom a happy twenty-sixth birthday, and that's the end of my diatribe.
Sir?
Yeah, Sean, I noticed on, up in Deerfield on Schwartz, there seems to be cable being put in. Now, is that a continuation of the cable that we had, that we were told they didn't, weren't going to complete it? And now are they completing it? Where are we on that whole thing? What's that about?
I have no update, uh, on the UG fiber. So that, um, that's where that's at. The area that you referenced and then I believe it's also going to continue along one hundred and thirty-fourth Street. Is that correct? Kansas Avenue. Yeah. So down Kansas Avenue to one hundred and thirty-fourth, it's through Deerfield, uh, generally. Um, that is AT&T. So AT&T is, um, putting in fiber throughout the town. I believe they're starting in that particular area.
That is residential fiber, right?
Correct, yeah. So it's the AT&T fiber. Um, right now, we have sort of a hybrid coaxial, something else, uh, fiber. Uh, this is actual fiber. So that's what's going on there. There should be a franchise agreement. We've been working with AT&T for a little while now to try to get that updated, which is somewhat specific to that fiber build out. But, um, obviously, they're not, they're not waiting around for that to get finalized, so. Um, but that will come forward to the city council here probably in the next month or two.
Uh, nothing else? Uh, I'll go ahead with the, the mayor's portion. Um, there were a few things I noticed, uh, you brought up, um, weeds, uh, impacting roads in different areas. On one hundred and thirty-second street, there's, uh, quite a overgrowth from big evergreen trees in the middle of the block just south of Kansas Avenue. Um, and I think those are in individuals, so they may have to be notified. Um, Riverview west of one hundred and thirty-fourth, uh, been contacted. It's in pretty bad condition and might, uh, benefit from some of those potholes being either made into one very large pothole or having some material put in it. The streetlights on the, um, three hundred block of Oak Street, uh, are out on the west side of the street on Mister, uh, the gentleman who was here earlier, his side of the street. Both the, um, real str- the overhead streetlight as well as the decorative streetlights are all, uh, appear to be out. Those might need a little attention. Again, I had an opportunity to drive across the state of Kansas from one end to the other and, uh, Bonner Springs stands out. Most other places pale in comparison to Bonner Springs, in my humble opinion. So, uh, I appreciate everything the whole community's done to, to do that. Uh, speaking of Kansas, uh, Governor Laura Kelly has directed that flags be flown at half-mast from now through, uh, sundown on Wednesday, September twenty-ninth to honor six thousand and twenty-four Kansans who have lost their lives to COVID nineteen. Uh, she, uh, she made a statement, uh, that we have the tools to stop the virus in its tracks and prevent further unnecessary deaths of our loved ones and neighbors. And she urges all Kansans to get vaccinated, wear masks and follow best heal- best health practices. I, I second that. Unless anyone else has any questions for me, we are adjourned.